So, we'll begin by calling this meeting to order for May 4th of the Planning Commission. We'll start by a roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Van Alen.
Here.
Commissioner Brock. Abson. Commissioner Carey.
President.
Commissioner Peeling.
Here.
Commissioner Boll.
Here.
Commissioner Spurber. Abson. Assistant City Attorney Doug Farley.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Aronoz.
I have a public comment in this period right now. Anybody wish to speak on any item, agenda or not, or address this commission for anything, you have three minutes. See ye none, we'll close that public hearing, and we'll go to approve the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll move to approve the minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We have one for April 4th and one for April 6th.
This is for the study session, the first.
For the study session, correct. I, well, I entertain a motion for the 4th, first, on the minutes.
Move to approve the April 4th study session minutes.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Oh, motion carried. We now have the minutes for April 6th, which there has been an updated version planned, prepared for this commission, and I'm sure we all read it, and therefore it has not gone to the public yet, but it will be posted tomorrow, so what is this commission in favor with this? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I have three suggestions for the minutes that have been handed out to the commission this evening. It's kind of funny, the first 39 minutes of our meeting on the website, the Spark Centennial TV music has kind of played over the minute, over the meeting. So I think Merrily did a great job capturing the first 39 minutes, even though it's not available on the website because of the music. But basically, I had three changes. On page four, there were some comments that I made, for the record, with respect to that zone, rezone application, that I wanted to have included in the minutes. On page six of the meeting minutes, there was a question, and this was concerning the tentative map up at Miramonte that we were looking at. I had some questions for the city engineer, and one of the questions that I had was about the cost to maintain those dam structures, and I want to make sure that wasn't captured in the meeting minutes. And then there was just at the end, and this isn't a big deal at all, but the initial minutes that we did get, there weren't any comments from the commission. I had, I had one, so I just threw that in there. So the proposed language is in your packets, and I certainly appreciate staff's work, as always, and the commission's consideration on this.
Yep, I'll move to approve the minutes for the April 6th meeting. The revised minutes that were handed out to the commission that are available for the Spark, on Spark's website tomorrow, with the changes that Mr. Carey just addressed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, for the sake of clarity and the record, the reason the revised minutes will be posted on the website tomorrow is that they were distributed to the commission just now, at the meeting.
Prior to the meeting. They were not made available to the commission at any point before that, and as such, the open meeting law requires that they be posted within 24 hours and not before the meeting, so that is why they'll be available on the website tomorrow.
Are you satisfied with the motion?
Yes, I am.
All right, we'll go on to an announcement of committee reports, please.
The only announcement I have, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission on May 18th will not be necessary, and so the June 1st will be when the Planning Commission next meets.
Any information?
We have none.
With that, I'll open a public hearing for PCN 170015. Ian, please.
Chairman, here's me, members of the Planning Commission, I'm the city manager planner. The item I have presented to you this evening is a rezoning request by the Rock Church to rezone their property located at 4950 Vista Boulevard from PO, professional office, to C2, general commercial. As you can see on the exhibit that we have here, this is a site plan that's submitted. It's a little fuzzy. We actually created a new one, just for a little bit more clarity. Highlighted and starred location is the Rock Church's property. You can see Vista adjacent to the west, Los Altos to the north, Dist to the south, and then far off to the west, Sparks Boulevard, to kind of get your bearings here. The Rock Church was approved through special use permit in 2003. In 2006, they had another special use permit approved that allowed them to operate a preschool. In 2012, there was another special use permit that was approved that expanded that from to a private school and childcare. In the PO zoning district, churches require a conditional use permit to operate. In the C2 district, they do not, they're a permitted use. The use of childcare does require a conditional use permit in both C2 and PO. Excuse me if I get those mixed up. I keep trying to say CO and P2, but bear with me, I don't want to get startled on you today. On this, this is a map of the comprehensive plan land use. As you can see, this, this area is designated as C or commercial. Obviously, it's the red highlighted piece here. The C land use designation, PO and C2 are both permitted zonings in that land use designation. Following, we have a map of existing zoning, with the blue of both these parcels being PO, which is the professional office use that is, or zoning that's existing there, and then the proposed zoning of C2. C2 has a variety of land uses that are permitted in C2 that are not permitted in PO. I'll go through those quickly with you now. Multifamily is one, with multifamily projects over 110 units requiring a conditional use permit, a halfway house by conditional use permit, hotels and motels by conditional use permit, resorts, dude ranches and guest ranches by conditional use, overnight animal services, payday loans, title loans, pawnbrokers by conditional use, craft distilleries, breweries, groceries, and food markets, liquor stores, drive-throughs, bail bond services, funeral and internment services, maintenance and repair services, tattoo parlors, wedding chapels, building material sale and services, convenience stores, nurseries, commercial, retail, and wholesale, general retail, light, auto, and truck repair, manufactured home dealers by conditional use, vehicle rentals, bar and lounges, cultural institutions, entertainment facilities, theaters, major recreational facilities by conditional use, this would be something like Wild Waters or a theme park, production craft work, building maintenance services, commercial and industrial supply and equipment providers, and mini warehouse by conditional use. In addition to those uses that are available in C2 that aren't in PO, there are also uses that would require a conditional use permit in PO but are permitted by right in C2. Those are a call center, a car wash, a gas station, a church or worship center, event center or banquet hall, fraternal club, lodge, community services facility, and media production. Let me go back to the zoning map real quick. This site is adjacent to other C2 and PO zoned properties. The adjacency between C2 and PO is not typically of concern, however, this site is also adjacent to residential properties on the east and west. The Sparks Municipal Code has buffering and design standards when residential and non-residential uses or zoned properties are adjacent. Those buffering and design standards do not change between PO and C2, so those standards stay the same. There are also properties to the north and south of this site that are currently zoned C2 that are adjacent to the same residential neighborhoods as the subject site is. In addition to the permitted, the changes in permitted use, there is also changes in sign standards with the rezoning from PO to C2. In the PO district, building mounted signs are allowed at 1% of the gross floor area of the business. In the C2 zoning district, it is 1 square foot of building mounted sign for every linear foot of business frontage. In the PO district, you are not allowed to have monument, not monument, freestanding signs. In the C2 district, you are allowed freestanding signs. Also, in the C2 district, you're allowed to have digital signs, whereas you're not in the PO district. While the number and intensity of uses is higher in the C2 district, it's not uncommon in the city of Sparks to have C2 adjacent to residential uses. As we can see, the, I mentioned earlier, the property to the north and to the south of this property are currently adjacent to residential uses, the same residential neighborhoods that are adjacent to the subject site. Approval of this rezoning would allow this property to enjoy the same zoning as its properties neighboring to the north and south. So in summary, to cover the findings that are required for rezoning, Z1, where staff believes finding Z1 can be met, that finding says that the request as submitted is consistent with the city of Sparks comprehensive plan. Staff believes that can be made because C2 and PO are both permitted zonings in the C land use category. Also, the requested rezoning supports and sustains the comprehensive plan goal, MG1, that, which states to support economic vitality by providing a non-residential land use base, which this rezoning would continue to do. Staff believes that finding Z2 can also be made. That finding is that the project is consistent with surrounding uses. As stated, this rezoning is asking for the same zoning that already abuts the residential uses that this property abuts, so that consistency has been demonstrated. And in accordance with finding Z3, which requires that public notice was given and public hearing held per the requirements of the Sparks Municipal Code, notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on April 20th, and also on April 20th, 196 mailing notices were sent out to all property owners within 750 feet of the site. And then obviously, Planning Commission and City Council operate as the public hearings for this item. So to wrap that up, for these reasons, staff believes that the findings can be made, and we recommend, as staff, that Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council on this item. That concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have.
Questions from the commissioners?
Ian, did you have a chance to look at the land use information on what happened to the area plan?
I do have some history on that. So in 1998, the East Irrectable Area Plan was established, and it was amended twice in 2001, once for, to allow for public structures, and once to amend a design criteria that was established in that plan. 2003, it was amended again, eliminating some areas, and then 2006, it was also amended to allow for preschools. I think that was in association with the 2006 special use permit. Those two things coincided. And then in 2012, the Irrectable East Area Plan was removed from the master plan, and then when we, you'd also asked about what happened to the OP land use designation when the comprehensive plan was adopted last year, in 2016. We removed OP and created just the C land use designation that covered both professional office and C2 and C1 and some other uses.
Any further questions?
Follow up, if I may. I had a question concerning finding Z2, and you brought it up in your presentation about the, how the impacts could be mitigated to adjacent residences. I think in the staff report, you bring up that, you know, there's buffering, and there's lighting and landscape requirements. If there's a new use that would, to somehow come in down the road that would be of a higher use or greater intensity, I was just kind of curious, when, how that would be triggered? Is it parking? Is it hours of operation? Is it something like that?
Just to make sure I understand the question, Commissioner Carey. You're saying if a new use came in, how would we make sure that those standards for buffering and design, how did those got implemented? Or how would they get triggered, and when would they happen?
Yeah.
So, if the church were to vacate this property, and a new use were to reoccupy it, that is a permitted use, there would, it would be a change of use, and typically, there is not a trigger at that point. But if any new buildings were created, any substantial, like facade treatments changing, especially lighting, or something like that, potentially, that could trigger it. Like you said, if the parking radically changed, the demand radically changed, and we needed to look at that pretty in depth, potentially, that could trigger some of those requirements happening as well, so.
What about hypothetically, or I guess this is more of a code question, I won't go hypothetical with this item, that'd be inappropriate to do so, but are drive-throughs allowed in the C2 zoning district?
They are.
Is that by right or ADR? By right, okay. Thank you, that's all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Carey, can you briefly describe the difference between a use that's permitted as a right and a use that's...
permitted by condition.
Sure. So, those uses that are permitted by right would not require another visit to the Planning Commission, or City Council, or another body. They would be approved as a staff approval, administrative approval. Now, some of those, depending on what type of impact they have to the building, like the construction of a drive-through you may have mentioned, that would definitely trigger an administrative review, which is a formal process they would have to go through with the city, to establish that new use and the new building configuration, and what impacts that configuration may have become mitigated through that process. Now, if it is, needs to be approved through conditional use, that is a conditional use permit, that this Planning Commission would see and have the ability to review and approve or disapprove based on its merits as it came in. Could you now give a no card version about the concept of compatibility as it relates to competing zoning districts or adjacent zoning districts?
Sure. I didn't, I didn't mean to stump you. So, we all understand that there are a few general categories of land use, or maybe we don't all understand, but from a planning perspective, there are a few categories generally of land use. Essentially, you have residential, which you may or may not want to split to singular multifamily, but let's just, for the sake of this discussion, we have residential, you have commercial, and you have industrial. And then you can also get into discussions of ag and open space, but essentially, as far as three main land uses, you have residential, commercial, and industrial. And obviously, all those land uses have their own intensity and the impacts that they bring. When we start talking about compatibility between those uses, the question becomes, can someone operating within one of those uses operate in such a way that adjacent uses that are different would not have a detrimental impact? As an example, industrial and residential are really hard to show compatibility between because the impacts of industrial are often large, loud vehicles, potentially dust and noise, and adjacent to residential, it's hard to enjoy residential property in that way. Commercial and residential can also be, they can become strained, but typically, the way we would address those through is through requirements in the code for buffering, or noise ordinance kind of things that say, hey, you know, we may talk about hours of operation on some of these businesses, specifically through conditional uses, we would apply those. And so when we talk about compatibility, it's not always a simple answer of, yes, this kind is and this kind isn't, but we've created opportunities in the code to try to buffer and mitigate the general impact of some of these uses being adjacent that may not be the same.
Fair to say, essentially, you're looking for ways to mitigate the impacts of the various zoning districts, so that adjacent zoning districts, adjacent parcels can exist in perpetuity without ruining the uses on the neighboring parcels. Is that...
That would be accurate.
Okay. So, when you were talking earlier about your administrative reviews, and you were talking about conditional use permits, do those represent opportunities for the city to impose conditions on a particular use that would mitigate its impacts on the surrounding property? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, would that occur in every instance of a change, on every instance of a changed use on this parcel, or no?
It would not.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head which instances would not trigger such an event?
So, the, typically, if it does not, if it's permitted by right, it does not require conditional use permit, and it is just a change of occupancy, that building, in this case, it's a church, so it's a little odd, but potentially, if this were some other kind of building, and it had one commercial use of, say, we go and we look at our list here, if, if there was a grocery store, and it became a liquor store, there would be no additional review at that point, because they're both permitted uses, and they would transition across. If either of those uses needed to do additions to the building to those use, they would be an opportunity for us to do an administrative review and add additional mitigation measures if we see those being an issue.
What about changes in signage?
Changes in signage, typically, those are just an administrative permit, the signed permit is just an administrative permit, not require conditional use, but those signed permits do have a lot of kind of conditions built into them, for lack of a better term, you know, distance separation, the way that the light levels that are appropriate, and the separation from residential uses, there's a lot of that built into that code, and so we would look at that submittal, and we would look at those standards, and we would make sure that those standards met, and there are mitigation measures kind of built into the sign code that would address that.
Doug, thank you.
I think you helped clear it up. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Ian, when you moved from a PO, you say it's 1% of ground floor area for a mounted sign.
For a building mounted sign.
For a building mounted sign. Now, so the address of this location is 4950 Vista Boulevard. On C2, it goes to 1 square feet of linear, I think you said, linear frontage, essentially, business frontage. This is back a little bit into, off of Vista. What are we looking at as business frontage for that 1 square foot?
So, as you said, this building has, this property has two frontages. The site has two frontages, on Vista and on Irrectable. Business frontage is about the way the building faces either a public street or a public area.
Clarification, where it says Irrectable, that is actually Vista, correct?
Yeah, I think it's just the way... The label fell with the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's, that's fine, it's just Vista.
Sorry, trying to find the hand. Okay, so, and I have that section of the code written down here, just so that I could, I could read to you guys exactly, just the commission exactly, what business frontage says, and how we would figure that if a new sign permit were to come in. It says, "The length of the face or wall of a completely enclosed and permanent building occupied by an individual building occupant and contains a customer entrance." So, we have to realize that the sign code is trying to catch all commercial buildings, and so there is a little bit of, it's a little bit complicated, but it's basically saying, if you had just a portion of a wall, like in a strip center, that your amount of frontage is how long you are along the front of that building. But in this case, you occupy the entirety of the building, so you're the entirety of the face of that building. And it says, "An occupant may have more than one business frontage if it occupies a building frontage facing on two or more streets or public areas." In public areas is included in there, because we have, say, like the Galleria Shopping Center or these larger shopping centers, that you may not face a street at all. And so how would we figure your signage? And so, public area, we use, that's essentially parking lot, counts as public area. So, the business frontage of this building would be along Irrectable here, because there's a public entrance here, and then along this parking lot, because it's a public entrance here. And so we would count those two sides as business frontage for this building. You're welcome.
Anything further?
One for the... With the C2, it says there is, I'm going back to the sign again, I'm sorry. What is the largest freestanding sign in C2 with, that this, with this property that can be put on the site?
Freestanding signs are calculated at 35% of your site frontage, which is, is now we're talking about the actual property line that abuts a road. And so, the, the...
That's quite a bit.
Yes, it's roughly 698 linear feet of frontage that this parcel has on the road, so they would be allowed 244 square feet of freestanding sign, and that freestanding sign would have a maximum height of 30 feet.
That's a pretty good size sign.
I mean, up to, I mean, they can go up to, yeah. Interesting, okay, thank you.
Any further? Thank you. Yeah, applicant here. Would you like to address this commission? You want to add anything to it or not? All right, this being a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this commission on this issue? See ye none. I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and a possible vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three points I'd kind of like to bring up for the commission, kind of how I'm feeling on this item. It is kind of unusual, we're looking at a rezoning request with an existing building. I did want to address three things. The first thing was, I do agree with staff that this, that the zoning is consistent with our comprehensive plan. I do disagree with the, and I do recognize that there are areas in the city...
I do disagree with the, and I do recognize that there are areas in the city that are C2 that are adjacent to residential, and it's not uncommon, but I don't think that that should be the standard, I don't think that should be the practice. And I bring that up as a, as a resident that lives in a home adjacent to a C2 zoning district that had a development on it after my home was built. I think there's a lot of unintended consequences when we're looking at C2 adjacent to existing residents. I get, you know, there, there's noise impacts, I get headlights in my living room every, every night, so I, I did, I did want to say, I think, moving forward, I think from our Comprehensive Plan, we should look at that, to not, you know, do C2 next to residential. I think that C1's more, more appropriate, certainly PO. Second thing I'd like to address, and just bring up for the point of discussion, I hate losing any PO acreage in the city. I think anyone that drives on Vista or Sparks Boulevard along Rush Hour in this part of the city can attest that we need more jobs and more employment opportunities in this, in this area. But I think with respect to the specific property we're looking at tonight, a decision was made by this body, and the City Council, and past City Councils, to, you know, rezone the, to re-designate a new land use for this, to kind of have it be more, more commercial. So with all that being said, I do concur with Staff that this is conformant, this is in conformance with, with our master plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments? I will adjourn if somebody's there.
Got one ready, Frank.
All right.
All right. I moved forward a recommendation of approval to City Council of the requests associated with PCN 17-0015, to rezone a parcel approximately 4.09 acres in size from PO, which is professional office, to C2, which is general commercial, based on findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings is set forward in the staff report.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? General business, again, this is a open here area for public comment, anybody wish addresses? Commission has three minutes. Seeing none, I'll bring it back, and comments from the commissioners.
I, I had a, I had a quick one, and I promise it'll be a fun one, Mr. Chairman. May is National Historic Preservation Archaeological Awareness Month. I, I wanted to just kind of highlight to the, to the public and to the commissioners some of the things we're doing at the Sparks Heritage Museum this month to help celebrate our city's cultural resources and our, our historic preservation efforts. On Saturday, May 20th, I'm going to be leading a historic walking tour with the Historic Reno Preservation Society of Downtown Sparks. The tour starts at 10 o'clock, and it, and it should be a lot of fun, so I wanted to put that plug out there for, for the community, and if you're looking for more information about what we're doing at the Sparks Heritage Museum for National Historic Preservation Month, can check out our website, sparksmuseum.org. Thank you very much.
Any further comments from the commission? If not, I guess we can adjourn.